Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The first bit of business is approval of minutes, and we have a number of them. We had some that carried over that needed some editorial changes. So the first one would be the approval of the regular minutes of the May ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Vance.
I'll take it.
Thank you Brian. If everybody's had a look over those, I didn't see any errors or corrections that need to be made. The regular minutes.
Sorry. May ninth.
Regular minutes.
Regular minutes.
Okay. Here, no changes needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next will be our non-public minutes of May ninth.
Make the motion.
Thank you Vance.
Second.
Thank you Brian. Pretty straightforward, no changes need to be made there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The next one would be the approval of return to public minutes of May ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Make the motion.
Thank you Vance.
Second.
Thank you Brian. And just looking this over real quick, there were a number of changes, there's some errors here, but I had them all in my notes, so we can just make the corrections now. So if everybody's looking at it, it actually says at the heading, it says "Public Meeting Minutes," so that might be a little confusing if you don't have it in front of you. We've got it, okay. And the first line it says "School Board Chair Called To Return To Public Meeting To Order At 8:51 PM," is actually 8:14 PM. And in the next paragraph, it says "Tony Drappo Made A Motion To Accept The Contracted Services Of NECC." That motion was actually made by Matt Manning. And it was not seconded by others.
No, he wasn't here.
He wasn't here? Okay.
I think I made the motion even though I abstained.
You did make a motion, right? Okay. Confuse the two of you easily.
I'm a good-looking one.
Right, right.
And where is Matt's meeting?
Matt is at the strategic planning session, yeah. And Aaron Hershey seconded that. Remaining board members voted in affirmative, Vance Pickering abstained. So that's all correct.
Yep.
And then the final paragraph, it says "School Board Chairperson Pulled The Board To Adjourn/ Return To Public Session At 8:52." But what actually, there was a motion made to adjourn. You're seeing that it's, yeah, I think that was a kind of a carryover in Google Box when Aaron was doing this. So it was actually a motion made by Vance Pickering to adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen Seconded by Brian Angelo. And all members polled voted in affirmative, so that should clean that up. Seeing no other changes on that, stepped to motion to approve, or I should say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? So now, we're going back to our April eighteenth minutes. The approval of the non-public minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion.
Thank you Vance. Second.
Second.
Thank you Jay. There were corrections, I think this was... I think everything looked good on those. Anybody noticing anything out of order? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Extentions? Thank you Vance. And then finally, the approval of return to public minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
No motion, sorry.
No, thank you Brian. Seconded by Vance.
Yep.
And I believe we've got all the corrections on that.
Oh wait, why is that different? Oh, my name's just not listed on the non-public. Am I reading it wrong?
No.
You're right, your name was not listed on the non-public, but it should be. You were here for that meeting. I know you were, yeah. Let's stick in with the return to public minutes of April eighteenth.
Make the motion.
Make a second please.
Second.
Thank you Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Extentions.
Wasn't she on vacation?
No.
No.
I think she was.
That was a meeting before, this was the live meeting, that was the phone meeting that she was on.
Like the April ten or four, when we met on April tenth down at the other school. Jasmine was not there for that, but she was here for April eighteenth.
Okay.
All right.
Do we wanna, do you have to reopen that one to fix that?
To add her name?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna do that.
Yeah. All right, next order of business is communication. Judy, I don't know if you had anything, but I have a couple things.
Correspondence.
Yeah.
Same one you have.
Okay, so I'll go over that. The first one, wasn't a formal correspondence, but last week I was signing contracts, and there was a note attached addressed to the school board from one of our teachers to her contract, so I just wanted to share that. It's nice to receive a note, it just says "Dear Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to teach at Littleton Public School. I feel fortunate to teach in a place I care so much about. We have a great community."
Who's that?
That was Kristy Morris.
Okay.
And our second order of business as far as correspondence goes is, I did receive a letter of resignation from the board from Aaron Hershey. Received out the other day, and I believe she filed a copy with Brian per the policy. I'll pass this along if people want to read, but I'm gonna read it aloud. From Aaron Hershey, board member, "Anthony, it is with regret that I inform you and the rest of the board and administration that I will be stepping down from the board effective immediately. My schedule going forward will disrupt my ability to serve on the board as a member, and also to be able to attend meetings regularly. I'd like to thank my fellow board members, administration, and the public for their support in my endeavor as a member of this board. Best, Aaron Hershey." I don't know if anybody wanted to look at the letter. So when we get to new business, we can talk about posting for that and the procedure we have to follow for the RSAs.
When is your term?
Term is up in March, but when there's a resignation, we only fill it for the remainder of that year anyway, even if it was a two or three-year term till the next election happens. So on to reports, business administrator, Debbie, you have anything for us?
Just, well, the manifest is going around, and just a little budget update, there were a couple things in the budget that were pulled out of the budget, and we said we would fund the items through the trust fund as orders are starting, you know, teachers are starting to put together stuff for next year. One was the Channel Three project, the equipment for that, so we will need to schedule a trust fund hearing soon so we can get that going, and then the cabling project also. So those were two items.
Is the cabling project something that they were looking to do over the summer?
Yeah, yeah. And it was this building, because it was the last year, I think this is the third piece of the...
So we need to do that soon then?
Yeah, yeah, both, both projects. So I don't know if you want to schedule that for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think, no, the next meeting is not till three weeks, and then that's right at the end of school, so we should probably do it then.
Yeah, it gives us time to post.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a fun Tuesday, the twelve. Is that all Deb?
No, yeah, that's it.
Oh, thank you. Judy?
Let's see, we can probably do this under Board Action, but just to let you know that for the Director of People's Services, the interviews will be held next Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, so in the morning is three candidates. So I do need a board rep for that position, it's been past practice with the board to have a rep on that committee.
Okay. I guess it's gonna be morning interviews?
Just morning, three morning interviews.
Three morning interviews.
Those are all the three people that reached out?
There are five people that reached out.
And you wrote it down before?
I have three, yeah. Yeah, two weren't qualified, didn't have the certification.
What time, if it's in the morning, what time would they be done by?
It's starting at nine.
Starts at nine?
Nine to nine forty-five, and then ten fifteen to eleven, and then eleven thirty to twelve fifteen.
Yes.
Are you taking any instructions from Jasmine?
Yeah, I could do it. I have a meeting at twelve in Littleton, but I can, I can push it back. I can, I can see if I can do it, I can, I can push it. So I, yeah, if nobody else is, wants to do it.
I think you'd be the best candidate.
My schedule's completely open, so if it doesn't work out for you, I can...
I'm, I'm like ninety percent sure I can push it, the woman that I have a meeting with is super flexible, so I can let you know by tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I think that works.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, is it, would it be a problem to have more than one person?
Not to be a problem, but traditionally we've only just had one, one board rep.
Yeah, we have one special ed teacher, one board member, two administrators, and then myself, which is six, seven people.
If you want to do it, you're welcome to do it too.
I, yeah, I will have to look and see what my schedule is, but it's fine.
If you want to look and see.
We can figure it out.
Yeah.
We'll have somebody there. Guaranteed.
Where's just the, is the plan to not do a final, like a second round, just...
I mean, we may do a second round, you know, with those three, you know, I mean, with one of the three maybe.
That's why.
Or maybe not, you know, that's all that came in, so.
Okay.
I mean, is it, is it the plan to post the job again if you don't find a suitable candidate in the first round, or, yeah?
And I will be nominating a special education teacher for the elementary tonight.
Okay.
We're still in the process of working on middle school, high school special ed teacher. And we did talk about the engineering services, that's what we talked about with facilities, we could do that during the facilities committee.
Sure.
And although Scott will be able to talk more in detail about this, the administration did take a visit to Bedford Elementary School to observe the NECC program that is, is in place over there, and they have several programs going on, so it was fascinating, so Scott's gonna talk about that. And I did attend the North Country Scholar Ceremony today with two students, it was William Lyons and Lucy Laux, and they were recognized for their academic and achievements and their accomplishments throughout their years in high school. And I gotta tell you, it, that ceremony is unbelievable, it really, you know, it's all the North Country schools, all the North Country high schools, and just the, the achievements that those students have, oh, it's just amazing, what they're, what they're planning on doing in their future, it's crazy. And that's it, that's it.
Now, is that just for like the valedictorians and salutatorians?
Yes.
So each school sends two or three if they've got a tie?
Yeah, yeah, they did, they did have a couple ties.
Yeah, 'cause I was reading about profiles the other day in the paper, and they had two for salutatorians.
Yeah, they did. It was amazing. They had their stories.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you Judy. Scott?
Just a couple of items, more of just, we had the last, the seventeenth, last Thursday, we had our annual elementary review that went over, I think extremely well, Ms. Burrow, always, her students put on a great show, I bet that kids did a great job. Last night, we had...
Can I ask one thing about that?
I was gonna wait, but what?
Did, did the students know that you were gonna come out, Justice Mallett?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Because my impression is that they did not know, because they couldn't even compose themselves to continue singing.
I can barely compose myself. There were a select, so the, one of the nice, one of the kind of interesting things for me coming into it was that there, the amount of, and this is what's really kind of cool, is that the amount of work that Ms. Burrow and the rest of the faculty and staff, specifically the elementary school, do to put that show on, and the amount of work they do, to kind of, you know, if you're there, you know, that whole day, leading up to it and the weeks beforehand, to put that on, there's a lot, there's a lot of planning. That was a seed that was planted six weeks, two months ago. There, I practiced with the fifth grade and fourth and fifth grade boys from the Sunshine Singers, and they were under strict orders not to share, and they were the only ones who knew.
Their reactions were...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, and the reactions of everybody else in the room, you know, it's something I won't be able to get, you know, get out of anymore.
It should be noted that's currently up on the Can Connection.
I know. It's, you know, on the Can Connection forever and ever. So anyway, so we have that. And so last night, we had the Ice Cream Social that was put on in conjunction with the Linwood Booster Club, as well as the band, Mr. Anderson, it's kind of like their last concert, it's almost like picnic inside in the gymnasium, it was very well attended, so it's a very, very different kind of feel than a traditional concert in the sense of where people can kind of get up and walk around and have ice cream and have that kind of time, but listen to the band. It's also our first time that our fifth grade players play in a concert setting and they perform, and so I know there were some students who were very excited, a little nervous, and got to, but got to be in front of their parents and community, so that obviously went really, really well. Some upcoming events, on Friday, we have, we do work, having some Memorial Day activities, as well as Friday will be our Senior Day for our senior athletes, they are varsity softball and baseball, versus taking on Woodsville at four thirty. Judy already mentioned a little bit today, Mrs. Doyle and I did go down and visit Riverbrook Elementary School down in Bedford, and visited their partner program through the New England Center of Children, for children. They, we were, it was a good opportunity, spent about an hour, they gave us a tour of what their classroom setup looks like, how they have configured their physical structure for their students. We got to meet some of the students who are participating in the program, got to talk to the lead teacher, the BCBA Director and Assistant Director of Special Education for that school, principal, vice principal, so we had an entourage that was able to talk with us, got to see, you know, some kids as far as how they are keeping data on kids, how they're keeping their records, how they're communicating with families, the whole thing. They were very open to questions, which we were able to ask. We also took away contact information, and they were more than willing to be used as a resource moving forward. This is their fourth year they've had, and they've just been approved to use that program for lower elementary K through four, upper elementary, which they are considering to be five and six, and then they're also, for a couple of students, they have now been, they've had three approvals through NECC, so they're now able to carry that program K through twelve. So they're really, and that was the other piece, because I know there's some conversation that we need to have with like the DOE, the Department of Ed, in order to bring it in, and they were very forthcoming as far as like what the, what the steps need to be taken, and they were able to provide that support. So very productive time this morning with them. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have one question, tomorrow night, there's a...
Tomorrow night, thank you, tomorrow night, there was an all-call that was, was put out on Tuesday, Meg Thompson, who currently works within, within the elementary school, she is doing a presentation on, her title of her presentation is "Filling Your Parental Toolbox," just giving strategies with parents and working with kids, and some of the things that she is already doing here at the elementary school. She also works with the preschool in the community, so she has a number of different connections. She is gonna be giving a presentation beginning at six o'clock, so she's presenting from six to eight in the middle high school MPR. There is a spaghetti dinner that Mrs. Doyle has been working very hard on to prep and have food available for folks, and that'll be at five thirty, so if you want to come on down, give us a me.
And she's babysitting too.
And there's, she is talking about having some childcare available as well. So anyway, thank you for my input.
Thanks Scott.
You're welcome.
Committee reports, before Brian gets going with facilities, which met tonight, are there any other committees I've met in the interim since last meeting? I don't think there have been.
No, I don't think so.
All right, Brian and I are on stage.
Okay. We talked about all sorts of things.
All right.
I guess, just thumb through a quick worm down, we did a little chat about the science classroom, and just trying to keep that one going, so we know what needs to get done, and so that one's just, we'll, we'll keep moving forward with ideas, and one of the suggestions I had maybe was, oh, going on through the summer and into, you know, next fall is, since the project has to be done, it has to get voted for in March, so let's maybe try to, we know what we need, we've got the design, maybe just as time goes on, pick up some things, like maybe get some, not bids that are contractual, so we can build, like, we could actually probably go into a meeting with like a pretty solid number if we, you know, because we can now build off the engineering, we can build off the electric, we can build off a lot of that stuff, and kind of have a pretty good number. So that's just a slow project for the administration to kind of chip away at, and we'll just keep you updated on. Summer projects, everything's good, the, what do we got? The roof, deadline, August seventeenth for completion, since the staff comes back the twentieth. Flooring, elementary done by July ninth, however they want to piece it together, it's up to them, but by July ninth, because Scott has people coming in to go to school then.
Summer school.
The other infrastructure, Stuart's still doing the design for the elementary school for the safety, right?
Right.
For safety stuff, you know, that'll, that'll be, still in the works, of course, the high school part's still out till next year, and there's a potential top secret no one knows about that might happen, but might not, ten million dollars for safety and infrastructure going out to the state, so they are gonna just try to build a giant, maybe it could happen, maybe it won't happen type of list, so if they do start accepting applications for that grant, we will have like a whole bunch of stuff that we can just plug in and fire at them.
Sweet.
Like ten million per school?
No, no. So it's the same money we got already a grant for.
Right.
Like pretty much the same grant we just received, but there was, I guess, such a good outcry, and it went through the money so fast that there's a potential to release more money.
That's awesome.
So, so if we build up a list so that when that happens, we kind of can jump on it, so that's a good one. The big item, Wayne Fillion sent us his, his bid for the engineering, that went out to bid, for engineering of the heating systems and all that, he was the only gentleman to send out a bid, so that doesn't leave us in a very good spot. His bid was for twenty-five and a half thousand dollars for the engineering. We at this time are not gonna accept the bid, we're not gonna deny the bid, we're probably gonna move away from it, per discussion. We're gonna recommend going forward with Johnson Controls, bringing them in, Jay's not familiar, but everybody else, I think, was at the meeting when the guy presented. They've continued to reach out to the school, they've put in a lot of time for free as it is. Scott says he gets a call like every week, every other week from them, just saying hi. They're the big control partner, Jay, so what they did is, we stopped the project originally, just a quick, brief thing, was like it was, we needed windows, we needed a roof, we needed insulation, we needed a heat system, and everything was going separate, and I thought, like, why can't we put it all together like an envelope, since it kind of all works together? So they put together a big bid, and, you know, and most of us have seen it, they did a good job, a good kind of energy loss type package. They're a performance contractor, so they basically take on the whole project, and it gets paid out over the years, and it basically pays out at what our expenses are, so there's no overhead cost. So if we expend, quote me if I'm wrong, but if we expend, say, a hundred thousand dollars a year to operate these things, then that's what we continue to spend, the savings is how they get paid.
Oh, I see, okay.
So we don't have to take anything really out of our pocket, plus they, they look at the whole system, and they want to protect themselves, the only way they make money is if, if it works.
Right.
You know, and if, if there's an issue with the project, then they're right there because they want to make sure that they go forward and actually make money. So they've been reaching out, so we thought, let's invite them to move forward, at least briefly, not contractually, but, so we're gonna ask that administration sets up a meeting, get them, you know, to come in to have like a further talk and say, hey, like, we're really thinking about going this route. And one of the questions I had was, was that, so, because it's like, they'll call it like a seven hundred thousand dollar project, is this something that has to go to bid and stuff, do we have to wait till March, and if it's done this way, there's actually no expense, so we could start, if we had them on board, start tomorrow, actually working out these projects, so.
What's the, what's the length of commitment to the...
Was it, where do you...
It depends on the...
Depends on the package you picked up, but, you know, they monitor.
Conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, it normally has to be approved through the, well, I guess we have to find out more information, but he was saying it's, you normally have to get it approved by your voters anyway, because you still are entering into an agreement.
Yeah. Okay. But anyway, what we're gonna do is request that we get another sit-down with them, and we'll take it from that point on, you know, we'll have a sit-down, bring them in, get more information, because it seems like this may be the, the way to go, so, you know, whether they come to a meeting, or if they set up with them during the day someday, and anybody, any of us can kind of go at the same time and bounce some questions. If you want the info though, Jay, if...
I have noted to give him the copy.
Yeah, to give him a copy, it's a nice big packet, and talks about the whole project. So that's where we kind of stand with that. Bing, 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 roof, floor, grants, reimbursement, I think that covers everything. Good?
All right.
All right.
Thank you Brian.
Well done.
Oh, sorry, one question, do you know when they plan to start the roof project?
Did, did not have it scheduled to start, but they have, they're...
They have a firm date when they need to be done, but...
Yes.
Yeah, we're working on all that right now.
I'm sure we'll find out soon, I'm assuming most businesses are trying to schedule hard right now, so.
All right, and policy, we have nothing for this evening, in our last policy meeting, we kind of got in a little more detail about those, you know, two of the policies that were on our list, and I think we've, we got one emailed to us, I don't know if...
Yeah, I wasn't able to go through with the sort of fine-tooth comb that I was able to, to sort of compare the first and second draft, but the, I did read through the first policy.
Yeah, so I think we'll be ready, you know, we'll have a policy meeting on the twelfth.
And we're, and we're still waiting on the sexual assault policy, right? That's the one that's...
Was that one okay? I mean, when we went through it, that's what I, I didn't have...
I thought we had talked about sort of making the sexual assault policy a little bit more...
Sexual harassment.
Sexual harassment.
Yeah, because it left out some...
More, more akin to the bullying policy, similar...
Yeah.
Similar timelines.
Yeah.
Similar parental modification.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that was the sort of surprising piece for everybody, that parents didn't need to be notified under those circumstances, it seemed a little strange.
It was sort of like it was assumed, because it was following bullying policy, so we assumed it was foul, but we felt like we should just highlight it in that.
So we'll be able to go through those in the beginning of the next meeting, probably move on to a couple others, and then have a number written for first reading.
The goal for the policy committee is to go through each section, like each component of the policy book, so each, all your As, all your J's, all your C's, and, and every once in a while, we'll get interrupted, you know, and have to, you know, a policy will come that we'll have to bring forward right away, but in the meantime, we're gonna try to keep that steady flow of going through it so that we can finish the book.
Yeah. Is this, is this one, is this just a, an update one, or is this one that has sort of...
No, I think this is the one that we're, we're on the As.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I guess what I mean is, so this is just our marching through, this isn't something that has popped up and interrupted?
Yeah, no, this didn't pop up.
No.
So this is the current, these are the two current policies that are in place?
Yes. And by the time we're done, we'll have to start on it again.
Right, right.
The paint and the gold and the green, right?
Yeah, I just want to throw the thought out as far as policy goes to maybe brainstorm as, because we're gonna be looking at the handbook, student parent handbook, you know, any policies, especially pertaining to the students that may have changed, or we've kind of changed our procedure and handling. I know there was a, an issue this year with the, you know, the eligibility policy, because it wasn't lining up with what the NHI standard put in as far as timelines, we had our timelines off, so if we need to rehash some of those for June twelfth to get them in the handbook We had our timelines off, so if we need to rehash some of those for June twelfth to get them in the handbook the proper way.
Yeah, good point.
We should run through those and I'll take a look at them too and go through the handbook and see which ones have maybe changed.
That would be good, yeah.
Okay.
Something that we're looking, that we want to do over the summer before we hand any new ones out next fall?
That's, that's the thing, yeah, you don't want to be sending out handbooks to everybody.
Those are the policies we have to go through first because we have to have enough time to have the handbook printed, so that's why we get those.
What's the lead time on that?
I wish it by the end of July, it needs to be...
Oh, really? So, we should...
Yeah, that's what we're doing June.
Maybe this is the thing that pops up that we need to do instead of the other...
This is probably the time when we have to stop doing what we're doing and go to the handbook.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, there's just a couple like on the top of my head, but I don't think, you know, for the most part, the way the school year has gone and obviously your first year here, you can, stuff might stick out at you.
Yeah, that was a pretty obvious one I know we talked about at length.
Right.
I think last fall, so that would be when we come around.
Yeah.
The sexual harassment and the bullying should be done first and then we can go into the summer, because that needs to be included in the...
In the handbook as well.
Absolutely, yeah. All right. Business requiring board action. So, you said you had a nomination?
Yes, I do. I have a nomination for Jamie Dupuis, D-U-P-U-I-S, for elementary school special education teacher. Number of candidates interviewed were six and she'll be at a master's step ten. I'll send the, the information around so everybody can look at it.
Do we, do special education teachers leave?
We do.
You were still working on the middle school, high school one? As was stated at the Facilities Committee, we have a recommendation for Jim Fadden for the Clerk of the Works, who's the only one that came forward with those. The roof and the flooring, he'll be overseeing the roof and the flooring.
Sorry, who was that?
Jim Fadden.
Jim, okay.
For the roof and the flooring for the summer projects. He did do the flooring project before.
I'll make a motion to approve Jim Fadden for the Clerk of the Works for the roof and flooring projects for the summer.
Second.
Thanks, Dan, thanks, Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of Jamie Dupuis as the elementary school new special education teacher.
Thanks, Dan, second.
Second.
Okay, be to it, next time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
And then do we have to, have to vote to approve, to post the trust fund, right?
To have a trust fund hearing, yes.
Okay. All right. We said June thirteenth?
June twelve.
Oh, June twelfth. Tuesday, June twelfth. I'll make a motion to post a trust fund hearing for June twelfth for the purposes of utilizing facilities trust fund to pay for items previously taken out of the upcoming school budget.
Second.
Second by Jay.
Can I have a question on that?
Absolutely.
Are we just going to do those two things, the cabling and the, and the equipment? Or are we going to do like, we're going to take some trees down out of that money? There was some, there's a bunch of other things that was recommended to be used for trust.
Yeah, because we did some already, um, I would have to check with them.
I'll check it out.
I don't know if we have any bids on those yet.
I know there was like a hundred thousand dollars or something that was recommended to be trust fund money. I mean, it doesn't make sense to try to do...
These are the two biggest pieces, what we... And the, actually, the Channel Three stuff was coming out of the technology fund.
Okay.
Including what's the facilities.
So, should we have a...
I mean, yeah, we'll list them appropriately on that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're saying it's just trust fund hearings.
It's just trust fund hearings, yeah. Um, we can check on that, trees.
Because I, off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly what else there was, but I know there was a number of items that were recommended by both the board and the budget committee to be taken out of...
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And so, business requiring board action, so you had some support staff contracts, so we'll discuss that in non-public.
Yeah, I have the list of all the support staff.
Okay. Some new business, we had Director of Pupil Service Interviews, so we've already discussed that. I'll be, maybe Jasmine, maybe Jay, and I'll be the backup to the backup.
Okay.
We'll get that squared away in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Back to the board vacancy, going with precedent, I think what we need to do is post for letters of interest to the public. So, we can have those in hand by next meeting, June twelfth, and then we can discuss as a board. And, you know, the RSA is, you know, one ninety-seven, colon, twenty-six and six seventy-one, colon, thirty-three. You know, the board is responsible for filling those vacancies. You know, sixty, six seventy-one, colon, thirty-three talks about, you know, the handling of it in a cooperative school district. And even though we don't have any requirements of how many Lincoln residents, how many Woodstock residents are on, because Erin was a Woodstock resident. The vote to replace her will have to take place by Woodstock residents that are on the board. So, that would be Jay, Matt and Dan's. But we will discuss them all at the June twelfth meeting.
But it doesn't have to be a Woodstock resident.
Doesn't, no, no.
But we need to vote?
You have the power.
It's hilarious.
So, we can't vote?
No.
No.
It's, it's, that's weird.
I think it's so that we theoretically couldn't sway it to one town.
Right.
You got to let Woodstock make the Woodstock choice since it's a Woodstock person.
Sure.
Woodstock can't fit Lincoln.
Sixty-seven, two, sixty-seven, one, colon, thirty-three is what we got on.
Yes.
Our attorney said that the law had changed because it wasn't always like that.
Right, it kind of came into play...
Deion Marcus.
Right.
Came on.
Right.
That's right.
Because when Paul stepped down a couple years before, it wasn't in place at that point, yeah. The other part of that with, with Erin stepping down is we no longer have a board secretary. So, I don't know if there's someone sitting here now who wants to take on that role. Can't nominate, he's already vice chair.
I will take on her other role. What was the other position I wanted, the other committee that she was on?
She's, uh, she's on negotiations.
Okay. So, I guess we have no volunteers for secretary, I'll have to appoint one. Essentially, the main thing is keeping minutes during our non-public sessions and returning the public.
I can do that.
And I think technically, if Chair and Vice Chair aren't here, the secretary would run the meeting.
Correct.
I mean, I guess I could do it, what do I have to do? It's like three lines of work.
It is, as you can tell from what we went through tonight, can get a little challenging.
I would, I would have to do it, but I don't want to perpetuate gender roles, so I'm not going to.
I write notes all night anyway, might, there might be a lot more than you used to.
I did.
But you get, so I'll do it.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, so Brian Angelo will be our board secretary.
We got to vote me on. I just want to hear you vote me on.
What to nominate, Brian?
All right.
He's the board secretary.
Second.
I've never been a secretary.
All right. All in favor of Brian being secretary?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstention. Are you voting against yourself?
Just looking at the list. Negotiations?
Yeah, we'll have to fit Erin's.
When do you want to do this, wait for the new person?
Yeah, I think so, because negotiations won't start until the next school year, right?
Who wanted to do it?
Erin was...
Well, Erin's negotiation, she's the health...
Because she did it last time, so I think...
That isn't the one you wanted to be the on-chance?
What's negotiations?
Negotiations is contracts. There's also Linwood Coalition for Healthy Communities, which sounds right up your alley.
That was the one that you want.
I'm nominating you for your volunteer position on communities. So, I'm going to put you in there, Jazz, with a Z, might not be the right person though. And food service, I think that was the only one that says she was on. Oh, you're already on negotiations, just so you know.
Okay.
So, happens when you take vacations, Jazz. So, I think that's all we have for that and I didn't see any continuing business on there. I do have to, one thing of note is the school board self-evaluations. I am in the process of putting that in the Google Docs or into Survey Monkey. When I took that on, I didn't realize that other commitments and the fact that it's very text-heavy, if you've ever looked at it, there's a lot to transfer over. But I think it's worth the time investment for future years where we can just dial up that survey again and, and then we've always talked about parts of that survey that seem unnecessary. It can be easy to kind of pull them out and then we can discuss that before.
I think maybe if we, because it was on last year's board, you're right.
Yes.
Maybe it'd be a good idea if we find a way to get a, to John, see if he's the one to take it also.
All right. All right, so moving on. Mrs. Smith?
Hello.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you, how are you?
Good.
Heather Crowe would like you to know that Ty Gagney came and spoke to the girls of summer along with their parents last week. He was a fantastic author and had them share their thoughts about his work. Lauren Peck and Dimitri Spanos were both received honorable mention for the New Hampshire Scholastic Writing Awards given on May fourth. Karen Courier wanted you to know about two students who participated in the PSU Model United Nations Group. Daria Etchings and Kai Good were eager to become part of the student-centered organization. To prepare for the week-long event, Daria and Kai embarked on research on critical international issues. In this case, they each researched the human sex trafficking, human rights issue as it pertains to various countries in the world. The country Kai represented was the Netherlands and Daria represented Venezuela. Prior to the event, each member of the Model UN writes a position paper that states their country's perspective on the problem, legislation, statistics, et cetera, and concludes with potential solutions. Karen was very proud of Daria and Kai. They wrote impressive position papers and were amazing ambassadors for Linwood and PSU. They dressed professionally and they spoke and discussed their topics respectfully, articulately and with great insight. Julie Rand would like you to know that this year marks the fourth year the first grade has published a book. This year's titled is Favorite Places to Visit. Each year, they donate a copy to each of the town libraries as well as our school library. Soon, students will be receiving their books. The class of twenty eighteen, oops, sorry, reported that twenty members of the graduating class attended the class trip to Myrtle Beach. It was a great success, they made many memories that they will remember for a lifetime. It was great to see the students step out of their comfort zones and try new things. As a class, they would like to thank you for approving the trip and invite you to Baccalaureate on June third at Fivacott, at June, June's Playhouse. Finally, I would like to thank the administrative team and the PTSA for the breakfast they served us all during Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. It was a wonderful time and we appreciated the time and the effort it took to arrange the events and the food was absolutely delicious. So, thank you all.
And thank you.
Thank you. Anything, community?
Can I just have the date of Erin's resignation letter?
Absolutely. It was... She did not date it. I did receive it yesterday. I think that's when she turned it in the office as well.
Yes, sir.
Linwood Ambulance is in the process of, um, updating all the AEDs. We're having a little static trying to get them from the school. I asked Fran to get some information for me, I stopped by. Scott wasn't in, so I went to the SAU and Fran got me the information I needed, but now we've got somebody in here trying to check the batteries, change out the expired pads and everything else. And he's having a problem having somebody call him back so that we can get the six AEDs the school owned and we get them up to date. So, if somebody would facilitate that and make it happen, so we'd appreciate it.
Sure. I think we can make that happen.
You know, it wasn't hard, the person involved was just supposed to call this guy, give him a date, get all the AEDs together, go to do it out in his truck in the back of his, pick a Jeep. It only takes a couple of seconds for each one, a couple of minutes, and then it's done, but isn't calling them back.
Is that an outside company contract?
No, it's somebody who's on our Board of Directors.
Okay.
You know, I, I did them the last time, myself and Ken Chapman.
Yeah.
But they, one of our board members wanted to take it on, so, but, but it matters, keep it.
Yeah.
Is this like a volunteer thing or a contract?
I'm sorry?
Is this like a volunteer thing or a contract thing?
What do you mean? If they, all these AEDs that are through town, there's over fifty of them, were purchased by the individual businesses or in this case, the school, under the state bid? So, they were got for like half of what they were actually being sold for the public. When people did that, we said that we would maintain them, Linwood Ambulance would maintain them free of charge, but we need to have access to them to do that. And we've been doing this for years, ever since they started coming into the town. We take, we take the cost burden of that on us because, you know, we saw it as important to have all the AEDs, these AEDs into the town. But, I guess...
I guess my question is, is it like a licensed person or are we changing batteries?
I'm sorry?
Is it a licensed person?
No, we're changing, we're taking down serial numbers so we get the lists.
Yeah.
Okay? And the batteries have to be changed and the pads have to be changed. You can't auto pads. You, you can auto batteries all you want, they're only, you know, the, the two of the ones that you have are photocell batteries.
Yeah.
The ones that are, the one in this cabinet here and the one in the cabinet in the school. Okay? The four that the sports team have is a special battery. So, you know. So, anyway, that's something we do. If you don't want us to do it, tell us and we'll just put it on the list that you don't want us to do it.
No, I didn't say that, I'm just trying to learn, I'm trying to get educated.
Okay.
I didn't know that you guys went around town changing batteries and pads and I was asking...
We, the pads are only good...
If you're certified to do that or if you guys just do it?
No, we do it.
So, anybody can do it, it's just you guys are very nice about doing it. No, I'm not. I'm saying, thank you.
Price Chup, Price Chup, they had one that they got from their corporate office and we have nothing to do with it, they own it, they don't want us to touch it, so that's fine. But, you know, it's something that Linwood Ambulance and Linwood, well, Linwood Medical Center slash Linwood Ambulance has, you know, dedicated themselves to do. And if you don't want to take advantage of it, it's fine, but we just need to know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I'm sure we want to take advantage of it as we have in the past. It's been a good working relationship and obviously they're important pieces of, you know, medical emergency, um, and like I said, we do...
I walked out of here one meeting and I saw that one out there was malfunctioning. I took it back and fixed it and in a half an hour, I had it back here, so...
And we do those every year, right? Is that a recommendation or is it two years?
The pads, the pads and the batteries are usually, depending on the machine, the Zolls, the batteries are usually good for only two years and the pads are, pads are good for around two years. So, every couple of years, we do, we go out and do the whole town.
Okay. Yeah.
So, like I said, we just need a call back to set it up.
I'm sure we can work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anything else in the community? Hearing none, so at this point, I am going to poll the board to go into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, to discuss the, the contracts that were on the agenda. Jasmine?
Yes.
Jay?
Yep, I'm good.
Yep, yep, thank you. All right.
Tony, is there going to be a vote afterwards?
There will be a vote, yes, yeah, because we're talking contracts, so...
Thank you, guys.